So now, residents may be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. We have our new friend, the shot clock. It should face that way.
Yeah, I have to start it first, then I face it.
So, the shot clock is with us by popular demand. And we actually hold people to three minutes is what we've been doing. There's been some complaint about that. Would anyone mind if we went to four?
I would, because I know how to program it.
Okay. So tonight, it's three and then two breaths.
I just turned it on and off, so.
But we'll adapt to four minutes for next time. But we do ask people to understand the need to limit time. And we're grateful for that understanding. So, I see a lot of people who want to talk about the library. So I've kind of batched the library before anything else. And I invite David Cortez to please come to the podium. And please state your name and address into the microphone for the record.
My name is, is this on?
Yes.
My name is David Cortez. I'm at 407 Midland in Rye. I've been there for three years with my wife and kids. Before that, I was the mascot at Playland Park for four hot summers. I am from Yonkers, New York originally. Being in Rye was always a delight. Moving to Rye was a dream. So, the main reason we moved to Rye was for its balance. We felt, we've never felt more at home as a diverse couple. We felt it was a respectful place. And any way you dice it, we're a minority in this town. Way below the median income renter and a majority owner town. We had our kids at Midland. We switched to Resurrection. I mean, any way you dice it, we're a minority here. We became aware of this programming at the library, and we were very curious about it. And we did research on it. And we became aware of some facts that led us to believe that this wasn't appropriate for the age of the children. We voiced this concern openly. We were then intimidated. We were identified as the face of hate on social media. It was tragic. So, I beg the council to really revisit this sort of program. It's packaged as a narrative of inclusion and diversity. It's, in fact, a mockery of the minority experience. We ask that the council hold all institutions in the city to a high standard of ethics, and really take into account the harm that could come onto someone's personhood who is already a minority. That's my statement.
Colette Dempsey.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Colette Dempsey. I live at 195 Locust Avenue with my husband. We moved here in 2008. I'm a mother of four sons, a grandmother of three, ages two, four, and six. I learned that the Rye Library was going to have a Drag Queen Story Hour, I guess two weeks ago, for three- to eight-year-olds. And I was appalled for bringing such an adult concept to our children. Visiting the library and speaking with Mr. Schumaker about my concerns in regards to the Story Hour and its inappropriateness with this age group, I asked to have it canceled. I was told it could not be canceled, but I could fill out a formal complaint, which I did, with full name, address, phone number, and email, and that I could attend the Board of Directors meeting and voice my concerns. While first hearing the story was canceled, it was later repositioned as being postponed. I am coming to the Town Council for help, as I learned that you provide 75% of the library's funding, and it comes from our taxes. These Story Hours do not belong in children's libraries. The library's support of partisan political activities violates its policy for public use of library facilities. The library should not use its privileged position in the community as a source of knowledge to subject young children to sexualization of any kind. Lastly, the library's support of an event exhibiting misogynistic themes violates its code of conduct, in which the library commits itself to creating a safe and pleasant atmosphere, free from harassment or intimidation of any customer. I would like assurances from this council that you will hold the Rye Free Reading Room to all of its policies, and to protect the youngest in our community from a radical sexual ideology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to those two comments from what I saw at the meeting? Is that okay?
Maybe let's hear some more comments.
Oh, there's more. I'm sorry. Let me see it.
Dave Dempsey.
You can tell we came together. So you're going to hear some common themes. But before I start, though, I just want to echo the councilwoman's comments. We brought the meeting, the board meeting, and I thought they handled it very well. I do agree with that, by the way. Dave Dempsey, 195 Locust Ave., Rye. Been a resident for the last eight years. I won't repeat everything my wife, who just went before me, said. First of all, I'm not here to attack any group. I'm not here as some kind of anti-gay, anti-lesbian, LGBT. I'm not. And so, and I say that only because in the last week, the noise, the nastiness on the social media channels is unbelievable, okay? And I just think it's wrong. It's just not right. And for those who were at that board meeting, there was no, there was, I don't think, any anger of any sort. I just want to make three quick points, and it's, there's a common theme. First is the venue. As I think about the library, I think it's one of the few remaining kind of sanctuaries for partisan politics. And unfortunately, in today's environment, everything we do is politicized, and it's very polarizing, and it's not healthy. And so I just think the library should rise above that. I just don't think that's a platform for someone with their agenda, of any agenda, by that matter. Because once you open it up to one group, it opens up to many groups. And before you know it, that'll be really the, kind of, what the library stands for. And I just think we need to be super careful. The second point is really just about the appropriateness of the ages. So I've got four boys. They've left the house. I've got three grandchildren. They're two, four, and six. It's such an innocent age. And the topic that's really being communicated is way beyond their maturity level. They can't possibly grasp that. And I just think it's, it's an agenda that's being communicated to an audience that is just not in a position to understand it. I'm not against it. I mean, if the group wants to have meetings with parents or mature, a mature audience, they certainly can do that. I wouldn't recommend at the library. They can go to the Coriade Marriott and rent the meeting room and have all the meetings they want. That's fine. I just don't think this is the venue, and I don't think certainly this is the age. And then the last is really the vehicle or the method of communicating. And I just, you know, like to call it for what it is. I think a drag queen is a man dressing as a woman. That's what that is. And I think that's wrong on many levels. The first level, I think, is, I think we should have role models that kids look up to, a councilman, a councilwoman, a policeman, a fireman, you know, maybe someone out of the Army. Those are models, even a presidential candidate. I mean, those are real legitimate models that young kids think about what they dress at Halloween. I mean, that's kind of their world, right? I don't think a drag queen is. And so, and then the last piece on that is, I don't think, you know, you take a man dressed as a woman in a hyper-sexualized manner is demeaning to women. So thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, good citizens of Rye. I've been asked to read a prepared statement, in part because I grew up in a transgendered household. And after I'm done reading the prepared statement, I'm going to give my own private personal objections to the DQ Storytime Hour.
I'm sorry, can you say your address for us, please?
I'm sorry. Radcliffe Avenue, Rye, New York. My apologies. As a patron of Rye Free Reading, as a patron of Rye Free Reading Room, the library, I am writing to voice my strong opposition to the library's promotion of a partisan political agenda aimed at sexualizing children and degrading women. The programming concerned, Drag Queen Story Hour, or DQSH, in the children's room invites adult entertainers dressed in drag to read books to children ages three to eight, lead crafts and songs, and facilitate discussions that support and normalize a radical sexual ideology. These Story Hours do not belong in children's libraries for various reasons. Chief amongst them, including, the library's support of partisan political activities violates its policy for public use of library facilities, public use policy. DQSH is a highly political issue with which the library should not be involved, especially as it is in receipt of public funding. The library should be a neutral zone where one ideology is not preferred over another. Moreover, as a public institution, the library should be a safe space where children of all backgrounds feel welcome, and where all parents feel comfortable bringing their children. Two, the library should not use its privileged position in the community as a source of knowledge to subject young children to sexualization of any kind. DQSH is highly inappropriate because it aims to introduce children as young as three years old to sexual concepts that are well beyond their understanding, e.g., immodest cross-dressing, homosexuality, transsexuality, and gender fluidity. DQSH's sexual agenda and mature themes have no place in the library's children's room. Three, the library's support of an event exhibiting misogynistic themes violates its code of conduct, in which the library commits itself to creating a safe and pleasant atmosphere, free from harassment or intimidation of customers. DQSH is highly offensive to women because drag queens, by definition, caricature catcher, stereotypical vampire-ish women. Drag queens are hyper-sexualized caricatures of women played by men cross-dressed, scantily-clad, and adorned in heavy makeup. This event aimed at an especially impressionable preschool audience mocks womanhood and defaces femininity. Is that me?
Sorry, yeah. Take two more sentences. We'll let you towards four minutes.
This event aimed at essentially impressionable preschool audiences mocking womanhood and defacing femininity by over-sexualized women. My fully above is strongly urge the Rye Free Reading Room exert, exercise its power and judgment laid out in the library's public use policy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We won't get off to that other stuff.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the council. My name's Michelle McMullin. My husband and I live at 72 Claremont Avenue, and we have two children. They're both in Rye schools, in sixth and third grade. We've lived here about two years. We moved here from the Bay Area. We're among a number of these Rye citizens who have submitted complaint forms to the library regarding our opposition to the Drag Queen Story Hour. The program, as you know, is led by an adult, a male adult performer, dressed in drag. And we've emphasized that the audience is for three-to-eight-year-olds. We don't think, my husband and I, that a drag queen is an appropriate role model for a child. We submitted our complaint form, and we expected that the library would take our feedback into account and decide how to proceed. We were content, having said our piece. I went to the board meeting. I felt like we were listened to and heard. And frankly, I wouldn't be here again, except that we witnessed this campaign of bullying and intimidation that was unleashed on Facebook by a vocal few that was amplified when the city endorsed it by their statement from the Human Rights Commission. That is why I'm here tonight, and we will not be intimidated. The commission claims that their mission is to support the pursuit of social justice and to foster mutual respect and understanding among all groups in the community. I took that from their website. They did the exact opposite by picking up these bullies' hashtag of "hate has no home here," fanning the flames of divisiveness. We are deeply disappointed in the Rye City Council and the Human Rights Commission for its part in further dividing our community. I am comfortable, we are comfortable, with the fact that you may not and others may not agree with our position. But I think we can all agree that nobody wins when we seek to pit a neighbor against another neighbor in the name of inclusion. And I'm certain that, given the opportunity, we could find common ground, I would urge the city council to act like leaders, to take a stand for real inclusion and ensure that all parties are invited to the table for future programming at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Allison Relier, 12 Halsted Place. I love the library. I serve on the auxiliary board. And as co-chair of Herd in Rye and in other local leadership roles, I've collaborated with the library often to plan programming there. I attend a lot of programs there. Their director and the librarians are top-notch, forward-thinking professionals, and they're gems in our community. It's been a tough week for all of us, and I appreciate hearing all the voices on every side. The library is a place for public engagement. I don't think we expected this type of public engagement exactly, but I'm hoping that something good can come from it. I attended the Drag Queen Story Hour on Saturday in Putnam Valley with my son because I want to be able to, you know, really get, if I believe in something, I want to know what I'm talking about. And I was an educator for a long time in the city, and I'm familiar with the program. And I'm familiar with all different approaches to diversity and inclusion education. There was nothing, there wasn't anything sexual about the program. It gives children a chance to discuss differences and to learn from one another in a safe environment by presenting them with a performer who they can identify as being different from them. And then they talk about their own differences, and many, many very comfortable storybooks are read. The storybooks that are most often read are books by Todd Parr, like The Family Book and The Kindness Book. Spoon by Amy Kraus Rosenthal, which compares a spoon, a fork, and a knife to one another, and their different traits, and how they have strengths, and they have things that they can't do as well as their friends. And isn't that wonderful, that we can celebrate all of these differences? That is what the program is about. The vehicle might be unfamiliar to many people, and I understand that. And I can understand why it creates some discomfort. The library is a place where everyone should feel safe and welcome, and that's what our Rye Free Reading Room is. And it's a wonderful, wonderful place. And I don't want this program to compromise the integrity of that organization in our town. But I don't think that's what this program would do, or any of the other programs that Chris Schumaker is now proposing to bring to the table. These programs actually give our children, in a town that sometimes isn't as diverse on the surface as we might like, and sometimes people might feel as though they are other. It gives us a chance to come to the table in a place that's safe, and to really acknowledge differences and celebrate them. And three, four, and five-year-olds are really good at walking up to somebody and saying, you know, "What, why don't you have a leg?" Or "What happened?" And they're the icebreakers in our, in our world. They're the people who make it okay to talk about what makes us different. My younger brother has cerebral palsy, and so does my sister-in-law. And I spoke with her today. She's a Presbyterian minister in Pennsylvania. And I called her, and I said, "I really want to talk through this with you, because I believe it can be a wonderful thing, this program and all the other ones that we can do that help us celebrate our differences." And I hope we can get there as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Taggart Epstein.
Welcome back.
On the other side, sister.
It's different on this side. Danielle Taggart Epstein, 10 Sound Road. So I am going to read the statement already. It's rigged. I told you I have a problem with this. So I am going to read this statement that was posted by the Human Rights Commission on this, on this matter, as I feel like people, I hope that they listen to what our mission and our goal is. So in 2016, the city of Rye reestablished the Human Rights Commission, which has been part of the city charter dating back to 1963. And the mission of this current commission is to support the pursuit of social justice and to foster mutual respect and understanding among all groups, as was mentioned before. And we aim to collaborate with public, private, and nonprofit organizations for education and outreach to avoid incidents of discrimination and promote a culture of empathy and acceptance. In 2017, an anti-discrimination resolution was brought forward and passed unanimously by the Rye City Council. And it went like this. "The city of Rye is committed to upholding and protecting the civil and human rights of all individuals, regardless of their race, creed, religion, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, national origin, or immigration status. And we, the city of Rye, denounce acts of racism, bigotry, xenophobia, religious discrimination, antisemitism, and acts of discrimination based on victims' gender, sexual orientation, or gender identity." The Drag Queen Story Hour is a nonprofit organization founded in San Francisco and headquartered in Manhattan, and it prides itself in offering acceptance-driven literary programming for kids and teens through reading, sing-alongs, and crafts. And these activities are led, in this case, by librarian-trained drag queens. And it was started 2015 with goals to inspire a love of reading while teaching deeper lessons on diversity, self-love, and an appreciation of others. Teaching our children about diversity and inclusion is vital, and as parents, we want to raise accepting and empathetic kids. However, we all may approach this goal in different ways, depending on our experiences and our value system. So we applaud the Rye Free Reading Room, and they decided to bring this highly acclaimed and successful program to our community. And while it is clear from some of the comments we have heard and read, this program may not align with everyone's personal values or perspectives. That is okay, and they can choose not to attend. Drag Queen Story Hour is an opportunity for children to be exposed to different forms of beauty and performance. It can also help dispel stigma and stereotypes that are so often, and unfortunately, and inaccurately projected on LGBTQ youth. The program gives children, their families, and caregivers role models who break gender stereotypes, and encourage children to be exactly who they want to be. And that could be anything. It could be, as mentioned before, a police officer, a city councilman, a mayor, or somebody who chooses to dress as a woman if they are a man. Thank you. And I'm just going to give you a copy of the statement, as well as a petition that has been going around, as mentioned. The social media aspect of it was not meant to be divisive, but meant to engage on a topic that is clear that we all need more education about.
Danielle.
Some of the hashtags were offensive, though, I would have to say. Some of the hashtags were a little offensive.
No, none that were used by the Human Rights Commission.
No, in general, by the general public.
Pam, that was the last of the speakers on the library topic, if you still would like to.
Thank you. First of all, I think we have to think about what drag queens represent to a community. I think that some of you have said that there's a sexualization that because you saw it as a grown-up, and it was a representation of the gay movement. I think that where we're having the disconnect is that some people see Drag Queen Social Hour as explore the differences, vive la différence, as opposed to a sexualized matter. So I wanted to start by saying that, that if you are an other, and you feel like you are an other, and then someone says things like, "You're sexualizing children," they react with nasty hashtags that they should not have used. So if we could be civil, I mentioned in our last council meeting that I believe civility is a really important feature. If we could be civil to each other, it would really help the conversation. And that's part of why I was proud of the Reading Room, because I felt like they performed in a very civil way. The other thing I want to say is, I asked the same question about three-to-eight-year-olds, and the reason that they target three-to-eight-year-olds is because those are the kids that do Story Hour. Such an obvious answer. Third, I want to say that the Rye Free Reading Room is not, we have nothing, we, the city council, with their programming. Their programming is thoughtfully determined by an executive director, whom you've all met, I think. And we have no power to affect that. The minute we affect that process and get involved in something we have never gotten involved in before, now we are part of a problem, because now are we doing some sort of content, content, the word I'm looking for is?
Editing.
Censorship?
Yeah.
We don't want to censor anybody. We want you to communicate with the Rye Free Reading Room, and we want you guys to come to a conclusion, because we're one community. And if everybody listens to each other, I believe we can do that. I believe that they did the exact right thing by suspending the program. I have met two people that have gone to it and have, both with children, one with a grandchild, one with a child, in Lewisboro. And, because I asked about it after, after our meeting, and they said it was fantastic, not sexual at all, it was silly and fun, and the children laughed. And in fact, one person said, "My grandson thought it was like watching Superman, only it wasn't. It was something different." So, I don't, I think maybe we, if the city council could do something, we just can't. It doesn't make sense for us to do anything. I think this is a fight that you have to take to the Reading Room. And I hope that you guys continue to speak up, and I hope that you guys can come to some understan, we, the whole council, I think, hope that you guys can come to some understanding about those hashtags, because they were inappropriate.
I think the only thing, well, do others want to speak to the point? The only thing that, two things, maybe two and a half I'd like to add. We stand by the anti-discrimination resolution that Danielle Taggart Epstein referred to. It's also true that the city of Rye has never dictated offerings or content in any of the not-for-profits in Rye that it has supported, and it would be a very dangerous precedent for us to do so. So, I believe this is something that the Rye Free Reading Room is trying to work out as best it can in resolving multiple community interests.
Can I have your one?
May I finish, please? Then you may. And I'm eager to see what that resolution may be. They have a director and a board and an arrangement between the director and the board to work things like this out. And I'm hopeful that they will do it in a way that is pleasing to everyone, as difficult as I know, as mayor, that is to do. The last thing I'll say, this is the half thing, or maybe this is more than the rest, we all have to take care of each other. And I understand that there's been a lot of friction and antipathy in this discussion. I hope that we're now beyond it. I'm very impressed by the way everyone has spoken here tonight, the way everyone has approached the issue, and I'm very grateful for that. Please.
I just want to.
I just want to say, I just...
Can you come to the microphone? This is not, it's not for us, it's for the four people watching.
I do not understand how discrimination, the phrase, comes into play. This had nothing to do with discriminating anyone. It had to do with the appropriateness of content to children three to eight years old. I am not sure how drag queens were elevated to be role models, to be reading to children in libraries. They traditionally have performed in clubs to eighteen-year-olds and adults at nighttime. I watched a video, and the drag queen said he didn't know how these got elevated, that after the performance at these clubs, there is sex, nudity, and I can't remember the third thing. It has no business being in a children's library program, nothing to do with discriminating against anybody, but certainly to have discretion on who you're presenting to. I am going to fight for children for the rest of my life, and I think we all should. They are our future, and it might have been a fun program, it might have been great books to read, but we can read those books. We don't have to have somebody with a derogatory reputation doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move it. If you'd like to sign in, you're welcome to, but while you're doing that, I'm going to ask Mr. Adler to come to the microphone. He's been patiently waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, Dan Adler, 62 Elmwood Avenue. I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly, because I actually want to say something about what's been talked about. Today, you're going to be talking about the Earth Day celebration. I think it's great that you're planning such an awesome celebration for Earth Day, and I want to thank the council members for their commitment to our environment. I hope that the commitment continues when they evaluate next steps with Nursery Field later this month. The fact that the city is still considering tearing up the natural grass and laying down unrecyclable synthetic turf within a wetland and next to Long Island Sound Tributary is very surprising and disheartening, especially after we shared the language of the EFC Environmental Grant that required the field to be an integral part of wetland protection and conservation, and after we shared the 2011 city study that found the nursery location unsuitable for synthetic turf. One of the main campaigns for Earth Day this year is to end plastic pollution. With respect to the city's commitment to Earth Day, the average turf carpet is made of forty thousand pounds of plastic and four hundred thousand pounds of infill. I believe we should be working together to accomplish the same goals of protecting the environment, our community, and our children's outdoor free instructional recreation time. I believe we can come together with a solution that would be positive for everybody. Okay. Then on to what we're talking about. So I hear everyone in the room, and, you know, we've been talking about this a lot in my family as well. We live in an open society where we value and encourage diversity, and that makes me so proud, and we talk about that all the time in my household. I have gay relatives, I have worked with transgender individuals, homosexuals, crossdressing, you name it, based on my career and my wife's career. We've talked to them, and we've worked with them. One of the things that is hurtful to hear sometimes, the idea that these individuals, and we can just talk about drag queens, cannot or should not be role models. And the term role model can be defined however you want to call it, but every individual in this world looks up and sees themselves in somebody else, right? So sometimes they don't see the person they feel inside of them in Rye or in other places. And when someone comes up, and they might relate, and they might see something in themselves in that person, they might just be entertained too, but they might see someone that speaks to who they are inside. And to then say to all of those children who might say that, "That person doesn't belong here," the message to that children is heartbreaking, and it's a message to the whole community is heartbreaking, because it's saying to them that this doesn't belong here, and if you are that, or if you relate to that, then perhaps you don't belong here. Children are very, that age group, when they suffer inside, and again, this is not just about drag queens, but when they suffer inside believing what they're feeling, or what they want, or how they want to express themselves, isn't welcomed. It can be, lead to great deals of depression, anxiety, and all these negative emotions and physical illness. Truly, it does, and to allow this community to show all sorts of people in this world, allow them to be seen, allow them to be welcomed. If you don't want to see it, don't go to it. But to give that to the children, to be able to see something different every now and then, I think is an okay, not an okay thing, it's a necessary thing in this community.
Thank you.
Wow, you timed that perfectly. You're a pro. You've had a lot of practice with this, too, sir.
Angela Scott, and, oh, Sculte, I apologize. Your handwriting is so good.
Angela Sculte, eight Richland Terrace, Rye, New York. Thank you very much, Mayor Condon, members of the council. I don't have prepared remarks, but I was one of the original complainants to the library. I want to take issue with the fact that some of you cited the intolerance of the group, and I want to restate it, and I'll restate it firmly. The intolerance came from the supporters of Drag Queen Story Hour. There are people in this community in Rye who you should be concerned about, who have been intimidated, called names, have been followed, and are afraid, afraid, to voice a valid opinion about the appropriateness of this subject. I thank everybody for speaking on this issue. I was one of the people at the January 28 meeting. We spoke eloquently, quietly. We didn't do anything, we didn't incite any kind of emotion, other than that we are parents and grandparents, some second generation, and we are very concerned. So the thing that while the council can take a step back and say, "Whoa, that's not our problem," we think they did a good job. If you said it's not your problem, and you said you don't know if they did a good job, they should, in fact, vet the, they should take the opportunity to vet what's just happened in other places. There is an onslaught of having this group, who may be fine, as, you know, Ms. Dempsey said, in a, you know, nightclub. Everything does not add to the enrichment of an uninformed mind. It doesn't. Otherwise, I would like to sit down, and was something that we offered to the board from the library. We said, "Great, you can have a diversity committee. Take a look around here, Mr. Jenkins, and ask somebody from this group to sit on that committee." He did not do that. Mr. Schumaker did not do that. So in fact, there is no tolerance for another opinion, and as a contributor to the library, seventy-five percent contributor, a million point six, whatever, you have a fiduciary responsibility to be sure that that is an even playing field. So I hate to say this, that's the only time I'll use that word, this is not an intolerant group. We have been tolerant, and there are many people in Rye who are upset about this, and it is the responsibility of this committee to be sure that you play on an even playing field and protect our children. And if we think there are other opinions, by all means, ask us to the table. We're not afraid. We haven't done anything wrong. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Cortez, you wanted the microphone again?
I did.
Short, short, short.
So just, you know, I think it behooves this council to demand that these groups act in a very nonviolent and non-inflammatory way. I think there are a lot of people that are sort of in hiding about their opinion. I was not scared to state it here, but just to echo what...
Carolina.
What Carolina said, that there was a lot of hateful speech, and it's been, it's like a misappropriation of this minority experience. I do believe that, you know, there is a lot of hate circulating now, and, you know, as governance, I think it's important for the city to demand that this dialogue, you know, finds civility again, perhaps, you know, not sponsor or host, but suggests maybe a forum where this could be moderated and just kind of be put to rest. No one wants this to drag on. No one wants to look over their shoulders. Young mothers with infants don't want to worry about who's following their car because they said something about it being inappropriate. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay, so now it gets dull. You're all welcome to stay, of course, but we're...